Well, we're in the process of having to get as much travel.
I don't, I think I'm just like, we give, now this is just, I just think I'm giving too many exceptions. In, important.
Yes, please. It didn't call recess.
I mean, you have a metal square. You buy, it's not like that it's a secret.
Yeah.
I mean, if I, I, a secret, daddy.
Just take one.
This is supposed to be like something else where I finished.
Well, actually, it's on the table.
No, I can do that. Minor variance in the same location. Still. There he is. Oh, okay.
Never mind.
Mics are hot.
I made me some notes.
I was wondering, sir, calling you. It wasn't one of my best games, but it was a good day or what? It was nothing wrong with it.
Your mics are hot. Your mics are hot. Your mics are hot. Hello.
I should have called your cars and said that.
Yeah? Might be. Hey, how you doing?
Are you fishing?
Occasionally, not frequently. Occasionally, not frequently. Oh, yeah?
Nobody ever did, so if you get the move out.
Okay. Appreciate that.
I haven't fixed a light like this, so I'm.
Is this a notebook?
Yes.
This little conference call with McElroy's. Not being unfair and all this stuff.
Yes, it is controlled.
Well, they were signaling before that, they said that, that they were, they had a, they're gonna be at Buckey's, everybody's on shirt of the last shirt, we'll be getting there. That's like the guys, sort of later, you're going to have to face the people. And it's a dollar, two months from now, six months from now. So they clean now, they're gonna have a town hall. They know they're instructed to do that after August of them.
You know Kamala's sister was here somewhere.
That's okay, don't get over it.
You dream it.
Well, number one, I bet no she had a sister. Number two, I bet no she's.
Looks dissimilar, slams dissimilar. And she was the only guy in the crowd that gave what my younger dog bought.
He turned by one day, he told me, say, is this a solution? Probably. That, that, those that, well, said. No. Okay.
It's a sound board with people that you don't care about.
Yes.
In this day and age, and I'm not saying it's necessary. Yes. Thirty seconds. That's a military. You know what it's for? Jump down every time. Thirty seconds. Thirty seconds before you go.
Okay, good evening. Can everyone hear me? My mic is low bad.
For the most part.
Okay. Can you hear me if I speak up a little louder like this? Okay. It's time to begin our planning and zoning meeting for October the 29th. If you would. If you would, let's please stand and we're gonna have our invocation by Mr. Ricky Taylor.
Jesus, we love you and we thank you for this opportunity, Lord God, to gather together as citizens and commissioners. We ask you, Lord God, to grant wisdom, Lord God, to each one. Lord bless these commissioners tonight, Lord, let them do the best for what's, what's best for this county and the citizens, Lord God of the county. And Lord, we look to you, Lord, and I, God, to grant us, Lord, this wisdom, Lord, that we might walk in your will and, Lord God, always do the things, Lord God, that uplifts you. And, Lord, we ask you to bless our citizens tonight. God, give them wisdom, give them direction, and most of all, God, give us all peace, Lord, at the conclusions, Lord, that's met here tonight, and we'll thank you for all you do for us, and we thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Okay, while you're standing, let's go ahead and we'll do the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we get started, we have a bit of housekeeping to do. One of the applicants under new business has withdrawn their application for tonight. So that is item three, application 2409Z, McElroy Incorporated. So at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to table this.
Don't move.
Second. Those who favor signify, raise your right hand. Okay, we have tabled. Okay. We're starting with the old business. Application 23-16S, Iris Hernandez, owner, 2160 Rocky Creek Road, 30.08 acres located in land lot 172 of the third land district. The applicant, applicant is requesting a special exception to operate an event center for private parties. The property is currently zoned AR1 agricultural and residential. Is Ms. Hernandez here?
She is.
She would come on up. Okay, Ms. Hernandez, has anything changed since last you visited Willis?
Mr. Chairman, we need her name and address.
Iris Hernandez, 2160 Rocky Creek Road, Hampton 30228. I've sent over to Mr. David some of the other requirements that were asked of me, as far as measurements, a copy of a potential contract, and everything we're gonna do for parking, which was a big question last time.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just, if you recall from the late August meeting, we asked for things such as a rental agreement, template, liability insurance, alcohol policy, clarifying the size of the parking area and specifying coordination with the sheriff's office for traffic control in advance of, in advance of events. If you look in your packet, as Ms. Hernandez said, she has provided all those items to you. There's a copy of a rental agreement, liability insurance form, so on and so forth, as requested from the last meeting.
Okay. David, while we're here on this, do you have anything else to add to the conditions that are on page nine of the packet?
So the, um, original conditions are there, and then back on August 27th, a couple of them were tweaked, I believe number 10 was, where the owner shall be responsible for coordinating any additional security and traffic control and shall contact the sheriff's office within a reasonable time for arrangements. A hundred vehicles or more should be the threshold for that. And then we added number 11, parking along Rocky Creek Road is prohibited. To my knowledge, memory, that's the only things that changed from the original 10.
Okay, fine. All right, commissioners, if we got any questions, Ms. Hernandez, while she's up here.
I have a question.
Okay.
The county required us to have a, see here, where you've come in for a variance on the pavement, on the paving, the drive. I understand you're trying to save money in doing that, but it just seems to be that if you're gonna operate a commercial venture like this, that you would have a paved driveway coming in and out. If you can't do it initially, sometime in the near future.
Well, we offered to do, well, first it was the gravel and then the crush and run, which eventually turns kind of more paved. Like, I don't know if you're familiar with, it's called majestic acres. Also in Griffin, they have gravel, but we wanna do crush and run 'cause it's a bit more stable. But if we need to have actual paved, the drive-through going into the property, that's something that we could definitely do, but to cover the whole I and J area with, you know, pavement, it's, it's a lot.
Okay. Thank you. Absolvent, Sean, if you have anything to add?
No, I appreciate the compliance with getting us all the documentation, and I agree that crusher-run is a good alternative for a large parking area. I did drive by and there were balloons. They were by the mailbox.
It was my daughter's birthday. It was my daughter's birthday.
I was like, do.
No, no, it was my daughter's birthday.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hernandez.
Thank you.
David, did you have anything else to add?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there any other discussion from up front?
Mr. Chair, we have a number of people who have signed up for discussion.
That's good.
All right. Mr. Glenn Howarth?
Yes?
If you would, step forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Glenn Howarth. 1015 North Pomona Road, Griffin, 30223.
All right, go ahead.
So, we're opposed to this event center. We live about a mile away, and they had an event on October 5th, and we could hear the music at our house, and it sounded like it was across the street. This is a, we bought our property for peace and quiet out in the country. This is, this is a commercial business which has, which has no, no place in a residential area. There's, to have that many cars there and that many people there is, is against what the property is based on. And the whole neighborhood, people bought their houses to live in peace and quiet. It's a peaceful area. And to have someone, to have a business there that can have events every day of the year is not right in this area. This does not belong in this area. It's gonna add a lot of traffic on Rocky Creek. We don't feel that this is the right use for the property in this area. Now, they, we're, we're aware that they had an amplified noise permit for this event they had on October 5th. That's why we could hear the music at our house. So, this is, this is not something that we desire to have in the area. And to have this, and have to put up with this type of inconvenience and noise how many times a year or every day of the year, it's not why we bought property in the area. And once they get a commercial business permit, what else can be done there besides events? So, very concerned and not, not in favor of this at all.
Thank you, sir. Pam Allen?
202 Pomona Road, Griffin. We're a little ways down the road, but we're not in favor for it because of all the traffic. And we actually have a friend that lives off of Boynton, and she said it was like, it was in her living room. She said it was like a concert in her living room, it was so loud. She's a nurse, she's not able to be here tonight. But we do live close, we're probably two miles, maybe, something like that. And she said something about guns going off, like someone's shooting. I don't, several times, and it's, it's from that day, the October 5th. And we're, we're not in favor for it neither. I mean, it's, like you said, it's just, you, you, we're in that area for the peace and quiet. People's moved to that area for that, and you're gonna have people selling their properties because of that.
All right, thank you very much. Vicki Holmes?
Hello, my name is Vicki Holmes. I live at 215 Boynton Road. That property backs up to my property. You cannot escape the sound. It was like having a high school marching band on my front step. Sundays, if this event is allowed to open, Sundays, after our Sunday service at church, my grandchildren come and eat Sunday meal with us. Most of the time when it's pretty weather, we're outside eating. When you've got what sounds like a high school marching band, you cannot escape it. It, like I say, it backs up to our property. It was so loud, the amplified sound permit that got passed. That area out there is hills and valleys, and they set up on a plateau. So it carries, it carried all the way down to Hillview. My mother and my sister could hear it. My mother is disabled. The only thing that she is able to enjoy in her life at the moment is sitting on her patio, watching the birds, watching her hummingbirds. I am an avid painter. I paint, I water paint. I sit outside and paint nature. They're gonna have an event center, it's a business, they're gonna get as much business as they can. It's going to be an ongoing situation. So Sundays, back to Sunday, after we've had our Sunday meal, we call it piling up in the living room and watching football. And the women go out on the porch, drink sweet tea. You can't hear yourself think. You can't escape it. There's gunshots going off all the time. You know, if my grandchildren, if we are out roasting hot dogs, weenies, and someone's firing a gun, just to be firing a gun, where does that bullet come to? Where's that bullet gonna end up? So it is going to limit our peaceful, serene quality of life out there. I've lived out there all my life. My parents live out there. We are generation after generation after generation that lives out there. We live out there for the peace and quiet. I wanna sit on my porch, in my swing, and listen to the whippoorwills at night. The hooedows. This event that's coming, it's not gonna allow that. And I, I, please, I pray that you will not pass this event. It has already caused chaos out there among our rural country, community. Nobody out there wants it. They have no, the event center has no respect for the people that has lived out there for generations and generations. We hunt out there. We, we like to take that backstrap of that deer and barbecue it. You know, there's no, you just can't, there's, you just can't let something like this come into a quiet, rural country, neighborhood, community, that's upside down. For the people who move out there for the peace and quiet. We've never had any trouble out there until this situation has arose.
All right, thank you. Mark Holmes?
Hi, my name is Mark Holmes. I'm also from 215 Boynton Road in Hampton. Just here to stress my concerns on the event center coming to the area. We have actually lived at 215 since 1998, back when it was dirt road. Nobody was out there hardly, there was peach orchards across the street and everything, and of course, we understand there is growth. But the growth that's been coming so far has been quiet growth in individual homes. I'm not against, like, family gatherings and, you know, understand if you have a large piece of property and you have a gathering, I don't, I'm not against that, but I'm strongly against it becoming a commercial property. Because now we're looking at, if it, once it becomes commercial, it's a, we want this to happen as much as possible to be able to turn a profit. You're not gonna make a profit having two or three events a year. You're only gonna be able to make it sustainable by having events go on as long as possible. We've spoken to multiple people. We had some letters sent that we were trying to send in, and I don't know if it had the proper address, so they may not have been seen. But I have some signed copies from neighbors off on our street and also one street over, which is Hillview Road, which is actually the Spalding County, Henry County side. And there were even people on the Henry County side of Hillview that were complaining about it. Because, because it is such a narrow, deep lot, it goes literally between the two streets. But it's, during the Saturday of the last event that they had on October 5th, I was actually out washing my, my car, my wife's car, and I had my little stereo so I could listen to it while I'm doing my thing, and I had just ended up cutting it off 'cause I couldn't hear it over what was going on. It was like having a marching band in the, in the backyard. It's an area that my wife and I are planning on, I plan on retiring and staying there till I just can't be by myself anymore. And this has literally put a lot of thoughts in our heads as far as whether or not we can. I don't want this to, I, I kinda envisioned the best way I could when I first heard it is I kinda envisioned being at Lakewood Amphitheater down in Atlanta or something like that, you know, where you've got something going on continuously. But, a little bit concerned with, I mean, I understand you're gonna have security, but that's, you know, security will be on their property. We don't know what it's gonna do to the surrounding area. If you got people coming in and out all the time, or you got people that just kinda learn about this area, 'cause it is, it's in that, in Spalding County, it's in that top little corner, kinda tucked away from everywhere, 'cause Henry County's right across Jordan Hill and Henry County's right up north of that, so it is, it kinda gave us a glimpse of what could come. And I'm just hoping that, you know, I wanna be able to, be able to sit in my back, on my deck and just chill and enjoy the peace and quiet.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
Thank you.
Jennifer Pettis?
Hey, my name's Jennifer Pettis. My address is 1179 North Pomona Road in Hampton, Georgia, 30228. Me and my husband on two pieces of property side by side right there, not far from where this event center is planned to be. We've lived here for 24 years. My main concern about this, like the other people who live in the area, is the noise. You know, we live in the country to live in the country. If we wanted to live in the city with city noise, that's where we would be. That's not, that's not us. Another concern I have is if we change this to commercial, what's to say someone else is not gonna wanna do it? And then we're gonna have commercial property all up and down where we live, and that's not what we want. We like where we live, we love, you know, we've raised all three of our kids here. And the sad thing is, is we went to the county here to be able to divide our property up so all three of our kids could build a home, and we can't do it unless we pay $100,000 to put a little road at the, you know, up beside the property so they can build their homes. They've lived there for their whole lives. And they're wanting to build an event center that can completely change everything in this area, and that's not fair to the people who've lived here forever. I mean, I'm all for growth, but this is a residential area. This is not a commercial area at all. And, you know, I love event centers. Two of my boys got married at one, and they're beautiful, and they're wonderful. This ain't the place. And that's all I've got to say, thank you.
Thank you. Gerald Campbell?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Gerald Campbell, 2168 Rocky Creek Road, Hampton, Georgia. I'm actually right next to the property. I'm actually right next to the property of twenty-one sixty Rocket Creek Road, and I have no problem with the event center, okay? For me, it's very simple. I'm right next door. I'm in the process of clearing land and building. I've been dealing with Mr. Allen, and he knows about doing things the right way. And if Ms. Iris Hernandez is doing things the right way, which it seems, they are, which is why we're here today, I believe they at least deserve the opportunity for their event center. This is a regulatory meeting, so I know this thing's gonna be done the right way with the proper governing of the event center. But I think they deserve at least an opportunity for this event center. Thank you.
Thank you. Raina Browning.
Hey, good evening. Randy Browning, ten fifteen Hillview Road. I am opposed to the event center. I've been on Hillview Road twenty-five years, my wife's been out there for fifty. We have a concern with the noise and the traffic. We, we were outside on October fifth when the last event took place. And I'm here to tell you, I've never experienced anything quite as loud out there. And again, we've been out there for quite some time. Not sure if that was just a sample, wants to come or not. I don't know if there's any noise ordinance that they'll have to meet going forward that they're not meeting now. But I noticed Ms. Upshaw said she rode by there the other day and saw the balloons. When you went by, it just, it probably didn't look like, it's just country. It didn't look like a place for an event center or a commercial property. It's just country. I actually live on the Hampton side of Hillview. We're about a good quarter mile away from the thing, but it came through loud and clear. We were trying to figure out exactly what was going on. So even though I'm not in Spalding County, I was born and raised in Spalding County, I actually live just on the line. Hillview is a county line, but it's pouring right over into us. And I had no problems if they did it and did it quiet, if they can control the traffic. But the noise, you just can't overlook, not out there in the country. We're in the valley, and the sound that's coming out of there, it just, it just travels. So I appreciate it, appreciate your time.
Randy, what time for any?
It was in the evening hour, sir.
It was in the evening?
We, the only reason I know that is, we were actually walking our driveway. We got a long driveway, big piece of property. And we, we were trying to figure out where it was coming from until we got closer to the road, and then we zeroed in exactly where it was coming from. This property, because it's long and goes deep, Hillview actually runs up the side. So if that were panned out just a little bit, you'd actually see our driveway right over here, right off the screen. So where the event center is, where we are, is a lot closer, by the way the crow flies, than if you took the road. If it was a quiet thing, it was inside, and if traffic wasn't gonna be a problem, I would have a bit of a problem with it. But if, if what we experienced was a sample, I'm just not sure what to do about that. It was extremely loud.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank y'all so much.
Anthony Rudolph.
Good afternoon, thank you. I oppose the center. I am...
Mr. Rudolph, we need your, we need your address, please.
Yes, sir. Four-two-nine Boynton, aye, but right up to the back. You can actually see the, I guess, the round pit from my backyard. I think, as before, a lot, as I'm listening to other people talk, I'm not the, my wife and I, my family are a lot younger. And when we moved, we knew that this was gonna be a quiet area. And this is the reason why we moved here. We knew that even though we're younger, we weren't gonna make a lot of noise. We came to kind of retire and, and have a quiet evenings and raise our little one and just have a, you know, a good country environment. And the parts that I wanna bring up is, I think the application of the, the idea is great, but I wanna talk about the other side of it. I think if anything happens, the only thing that the residents that are around the event center are gonna get are, I'm sorry. And that's the only thing we have to deal with. I'm sorry that something bad happened. I'm sorry that an individual came and something happened. I'm sorry the music ran over. I'm sorry that this happened. And as neighbors, we just don't wanna deal with I'm sorries. We just honestly don't. We don't wanna have to, you know, and I'm looking at people, ten oh one or ten oh two, is the music gonna stop? You know, is everything gonna break? Or is the traffic ever going to die down? Or is there not gonna be an event today? Why put the neighbors through that? Why do we have to live on eggshells in our peaceful area? That we all want to, like I said, watch the game and relax and enjoy our families without having to deal with I'm sorries, or if something's gonna happen, or if everything is going to go according to plan? Nobody wants to live with their kingdom. Your house is your kingdom. Nobody wants their kingdom to always be in this flux zone of always having to worry about, is this that and this is that? You just wanna live peacefully. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, that's all who have signed up for this application to the CBA.
Excuse me, I had one more, I have one more point.
Mr. Chair.
We purchased our house a year and a half ago, and we moved to this area for peace and quiet and retirement. This event center, if it goes according to what they say is gonna happen, we're gonna have this noise going on all the time, interrupting our peace and quiet, it's gonna devalue our property. We didn't buy the property here to lose value on our home, in the property. And I truly believe this will devalue our property, so that when we go to have to sell the property, it's gonna lessen the value that we're gonna get. So that's another point I wanna make.
No, we, we understand. We got it. David, did you have anything you wanted to follow up with?
Just two points of clarification. So this is a special exception, as we all know, which has not changed the zoning. So if approved for this particular activity by this board and the Board of Commissioners, nothing, no other use of that type could go there. So it's not a carte blanche, commercial rezoning. Speaking about the October fifth event, what had actually happened was, there was an amplification permit for it, which was originally scheduled for September twenty-first, two weeks before it actually happened. It actually came to the board as a September twenty-eighth event. She had some conflicts. She came to me, it was approved for the twenty-eighth by the Board of Commissioners. She emailed me on the twenty-sixth of September. Of course, we had just had Hurricane Helene saying she had had cancellations about that. Could she bump it to, I guess, October fifth? That would be the following Saturday. I said, fine, as long as it was what you originally said it was, which is the fifteenth birthday party for her daughter, which is culturally very significant in the historic culture, in the Hispanic culture, I'm sorry. So that was the history of the event that time. Now, I can't vouch for what the noise level got to at that time, but it was for, it was not a event for money, it was a fifteenth birthday party for family, so.
So...
Ms. Hernandez, did I state that correctly?
Just a minute, I have a couple of questions for David. All right, so one question I have is, I've never applied for an amplification permit. So when you get it, are there guidelines as to, is it dusk to dawn or, you know?
No, it's typically to about ten. I believe it might go to eleven, but I think it's ten is the max. If it extends beyond nine P.M. for like five or six hours, that's when it kicks in. You can't do it all night long.
All right, we, we got it.
The crucial part is how far it goes beyond nine P.M. into the evening hours where people are trying to wind down, relax, sleep, those kind of things. That's the crucial part of the amplification permits.
Well, it sounds like it...
Yes.
Maybe went a bit longer than it should have. Just, just hold it, okay? I guess the sixty-four dollar question I have is, is the, under this special exception, if we were to grant that, does that automatically guarantee them that they can use amplified music at all those events? Or how does that work?
I mean, I've seen them before in other places where I worked, where it was, you limited certain days, certain hours to, you know, and whatever was associated with the gathering could not go beyond that point. That's within your purview, unless I'm wrong.
Mr. Chair, just because they are transitioned into a, an event center does not automatically provide them with authority to use amplification. They would still be required to file an amplification permit request. And under community development, they can authorize up to four hours and fifty-nine minutes, and anything over four hours and fifty-nine minutes has to go before the Board of Commissioners for their consideration.
All right. Frank, speak up, I can't hear you.
We got a decibel limitation on this? I've dealt with this before with the city, and you have to have some measure as to what you can or cannot have.
Yes, sir, I understand. Unfortunately, I believe the Sheriff's Department does not carry those, that type of equipment to measure the, the sound of the event. I'm sure that we could go back and ask the sheriff if they would consider some type of equipment that would provide us with that. But again, amplification permits have to come before the Board of Commissioners if it's over five hours.
Okay, any other commissioners got a thought here?
I have a question. Are you aware of any complaints that were filed by the neighbors regarding this to the Sheriff's Department?
I'm not aware of any complaints filed to the Sheriff's Department, no ma'am.
May I?
All right, go ahead.
Okay, as far as for that event, as you know, these events get planned a long time in ahead. We've been talking to the county regarding doing the center for over a year now. By then, we figured we'd be done and ready to do what we wanted to do, because our plan is to close out the pavilion soundproof. I actually have an engineer that already worked on drawings where nobody will even know that we're there, basically. And I, I understand that it, you know, it was noisy on that day, but we already had the event. It's not closed in because it's not completely approved, that we can actually invest in something like that, because it's not cheap. So I do apologize for the noise, but we did have the permit. The permit, it was till ten o'clock. The sheriffs were there, and they made sure at that time everything was cut off and everybody left. So we did the rules how we were supposed to, and that's the main reason we want to get the special exemption, to make it an actual event center so we can close it out. And that will completely take out the problem of the noise. As far as traffic, the sheriffs were there. I mean, there was absolutely no cars on Rocket Creek. We have over two-hundred-and-fifty feet into the property where the driveway or whatever to the parking would be. That could fit easily, what, twenty, thirty cars maybe in a row? It would never cause any kind of traffic issues for Rocket Creek Road. And the noise, I do understand, and that's always been an issue when we've done our family gatherings, which is why we wanted to go ahead and do it. For example, like Majestic Acres has it. It's closed in, nobody knows, they have their parking, their house is closer to that property than ours, and nobody complains for the same reason, and I understand that. And I would probably be in the same situation as them if it were somebody else. But I am wanting to tell you that I, I'm aware of the issue, and I want to fix it. I haven't, I've already got an engineer. He sent me over the drawings today of how it would all look when it's closed out, and we were not happy any noise issues. From my understanding, that's what everybody's worried about. So that is something that, that's a number one thing that we want to do.
Okay, so what about the gunfire supposedly?
I'm glad, I actually called the sheriffs after, because we, we found out about that letter that was sent to our neighbors. And I spoke to the sheriff, and I was like, they're saying this, or like, yeah, we heard gunshots, but it was further on the back street, not on our event. The sheriffs were there, they would've done something if somebody was firing a gun. They didn't leave till, the sheriffs didn't leave till like eleven, eleven-thirty. Everybody was like, there was nobody there anymore. So it's like, the sheriffs would've done something if it was coming out of our property. People hunt in the area, people do other things, but it was not coming from our property. And like I said, the sheriffs were there. They're not gonna let me, like, lie. We, we heard, I didn't hear them, but when I asked the sheriffs, they said that they did hear some, but they were coming from the street behind us, like opposite of Rocket Creek. It didn't come from our event, just to clarify that as well. So I don't have any more questions regarding the residents' worries, or I'm more than happy to answer anything. But I know the noise complaint, it's the number one issue, but that's the number one thing that we wanna work on. Like I said, we have, I will be sending Mr. David the drawings, just that the engineer sent them as I was coming here, so he can look at them. It's gonna be completely closed out, no noise going in or out, like it, there would not be an issue. And then they also have a limited amount of guests that can attend, so it's not going to be like, if it's two-hundred people, usually one person doesn't drive a car, it's like two, at least two people in a car. So you would think we'll probably have at the most, maybe what, thirty, forty cars for a two-hundred event place? But you can't even really tell. Depends on, you know, even if there were one car per person, I sent Mr. David the calculations of the property that we have in the parking space, how many cars you could actually fit on the property without giving Rocket Creek any kind of issues. So we also have two entrances, so.
Okay, when you came the first time, I thought you kinda indicated that this would be like a quarterly kind of thing that you did. It was not gonna be a, you know, every weekend continual type thing.
The quarterly thing that I was talking about, because we have, my sister is in a synchronized running, writing team, and it's like an association. They have to take turns performing in different people in different locations. So we would have maybe once or twice her team and other teams that come from different states to come and perform their routines, which would be like outside in the arena, but that's not like a party, you know? It's just them, and it's literally like just a little microphone with the, somebody telling people the name of whatever tricks they're doing or whatever. But the main issue was the music, the event, the parties. So for that, that's for the event center where the pavilion is, which is marked over there for like number A, it's really tiny. That would be closed out completely, because right now it's just the pavilion.
Okay, thank you. Wait, you guys have anything to ask? Okay, go ahead.
It looks like to be that when you were answering some of the questions that previously asked, that you're going to be serving or alcohol, or have it on the premises by the caterers, is that correct?
Correct. It's just like any other event center. The people bring their own alcohol, or they have somebody cater it or serve it. And whatever license it's, the county requires us as an event center to have, we will, you know, get them. It needs to, it need to be.
You do have a lot of residential neighbors. You do have a lot of residential neighbors close by, so, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you asked the question of whether, and I want to follow up with what Dr. Leviter said, whether or not the approval of the special exception would still require compliance with noise. The criteria for the event center in AR-1 specifically provides that noise shall be regulated by Part Nine offenses, Chapter Four Noise Abatement and Control of the General Code.
Okay, thank you. All right, commissioners?
I don't think you've been a really, a very good neighbor. If you've got this many people who were concerned and wigged out by a birthday party. And if you go commercial, I think it's going to be a lot worse. I live in the country and I can tell when you go from bow season to gun season. And I'd rather stick with bow season most of the time. But if you've got this many people that have been, that peace and quiet is being, I don't think this is a good business model.
Nick, you got a follow-up?
I, I guess, the history of it, was it intended when the property was purchased that they were going to apply for a commercial?
I have no way of knowing, I don't, I don't think we know that.
Mr. Hernandez, can Mr. Hernandez answer that? Was the intent of purchasing the property to make it commercial or is it just?
We, we just happen to buy for our personal events, but we have a huge family. And friends and family that we invited to our events really fell in love with the property and wanted to do their events, but we told them that it was just for our use. So that's where the idea came up, and then the noise issue came up. So we're like, we can't really spend all this money to have our family parties, you know, to close it out. So we're like, okay, well, if we can do it and to special exemption, then we can do this for everybody that wants to use it. Then we can invest and that way there is absolutely no noise. And then also I forgot to mention about the property value, that was just a big concern. I've done my homework and my research. I spoke into realtors and evaluators and that had, the event center has nothing to do with property value. That's all on schools and other things. So that has, I've already spoken to several.
Okay, hold up.
Because it's not, because it's not being rezoned to commercial. So it's not going to be rezoned to commercial.
Basically, this is evolved after you had ownership of the property?
Correct.
Ms. Upshaw, you have something?
I'm, I'm concerned, obviously, that anything that moves into a community that the residents feel concerned about that might affect them for privacy, for quiet, and for any other thing. However, we're compelled to follow the law and the rules and regulations set forth by the county. And I'm just want to make sure that you're aware of and have agreed to follow and be compliant with the several conditions that have been written and those that have been added.
Absolutely.
And by that compliance, which includes the Noise Abatement and Control ordinances of the county.
Absolutely.
Then, I'm not comfortable with it, but I don't see how we can not abide by the conditions and the regulations of the county.
And, and I understand, and I wasn't going to get anything started as far as closing it out until we found out what was going to happen. But I still went ahead, I paid an engineer to make everything visual as to what we're wanting to do so that it doesn't affect anybody. And I will be, as soon as I get to my email, I'll be forwarding them to Mr. David so he can forward them to everybody. So I have a visual as to what it's going to be and what kind of walls and all of that. I don't know much about engineering, but I told him what I needed. And, you know, he knows more than I do. So he knew what he had to do so that that way nobody's bothered about, you know, with whatever we're doing at the, at the event center. So I mean, I, I don't want to bother anybody, I prob, if it was me the other way around, I wouldn't, I would be concerned if I have questions. And that's why I wanted to answer all those questions as to what we're going to do to fix it, which is closing it out completely. Thank you.
All right, is there any other discussion? I guess, I guess the feeling I have is that I, I just wonder how good the engineering has to be to, to cover up the kind of sound that I heard was coming across various parts of the county there. I have grave concerns about that. We have, through the years, made a couple of mistakes dealing with entities that generate noise. And it's a rather sore point, but that being said, I'll entertain a motion. I have a motion to deny by Mr. Harris, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Nick. Those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed? Okay, three, one.
We need to let everybody know this is not a final decision. It goes to the Board of Commissioners who has the ultimate vote on whether to approve a special exception.
Absolutely. If you didn't hear that, the Board of Commissioners will be taking a vote on this as well, and that's, that's the vote that counts. Okay, next item on the agenda is the variance for the parking lot? Do we need to go ahead with that or?
If you've recommended against the special exception, the variance is moot.
Okay, all right, so we'll pass on item two. All right, just what we need, a proposed tech amendment to the Spalding County Attorney Code of Ordinances, new appendix in abandoned cemetery and burial ground protection ordinance.
So the Board will recall back in September, this was first presented to you. It had some clerical errors in it referencing the county which it was copied from. That has since been corrected. One thing also too is in some proposed amendments to the code, there is a section in there which will, if passed, address cemeteries. And as I said in the staff report, it's in some cases almost verbatim what you have before you. So really, there's a choice here to be made of, and there's, there's not a timetable yet for when that would be passed for sure. So there's a choice here whether to go ahead and table this again, the appendix in before you, or to, and wait for that other draft of the ordinances to go through or to go ahead and then adopt this and use it as a tool for right now until such time when those ordinance changes come to pass in the future. So that is up to the Board.
So question, is, do we essentially have nothing right now?
Yes, sir. We have some state code which does protect in, in certain ways, and some of that is addressed in here. But according to former staff members, when this was being drafted back in August and September, somebody from the state had told her that they were not really concerned with cemeteries less than ten acres. I don't know where that came from exactly, but it was a little bit concerning if you have, and we have quite a few of these in the county, of very small families type cemeteries. So if that is true, then they would probably not be protected as much as a, a larger, more well-known historic cemetery, so.
Well, it seems like we ought to have something, that's my feeling.
Chairman, I'd like to see us go ahead and do something because we do have a limited number. Small cemeteries in uninpopulated areas, a lot of them are adjacent to or part of church sites. Can you do that on a bunch of slave cemeteries in Spalding? And I think all of these, until you get the right ordinance, fine tune, I think all of them need some sort of protection.
Okay. Well, I'm going to make the motion that we adopt this current ordinance until we get it fine tuned.
I second that.
I have a second, those in favor signify by raising your right hand. You voting yes or no?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, it's unanimous. Okay, item four on the agenda, if it turns out, we need a little more time on that, so we're just going to leave it on the table. So we finally made it to the new business.
So we are, just for clarification, Amendment twenty-one oh seven about accessory structures is staying on the table?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, item one under new business, application twenty-four dash thirty-four Z Samantha Langston, twenty-four twenty-three North McDonough Road, Griffin, Georgia. Seven point one-five acres located in landlot one-twelve of the second land district. The applicant is requesting to rezone from R-two single-family residential district to AR-one agricultural residential to be able to use the property for agricultural purposes. Is Ms. Langston here tonight speaking? Okay, come up to the podium.
Ms. Langston, if you would, please step forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Samantha Langston, two-four-two-three North McDonough Road, Griffin, Georgia.
Okay, tell us what you're planning to do.
Uh, we just purchased the property as a young family. We're looking to just create a, a space for us to be self-sufficient, to teach our kids how to raise their own animals, meat, all that, and to give back to the community and teach my son, who's very interested in it, the business side of meat animals and eggs. We're just looking to have more than the current allowance of two hoofed animals.
Is there currently a house on the property?
Mm.
Okay.
Is it the intent to leave the house and the lake and all of the property as, as it is and to utilize a rear portion for this?
Yeah, we just want to use the current empty land. We did clear about one acre that was like forest to make into a pasture for the current two hoofed animals we have. But we're not knocking down any buildings or removing any current structures or the pond.
Okay. Any other questions from Ms. Langston? Thank you. David, you have a report for?
Uh, no, sir, just what she had said and her, as she said just now, wanted to rezone from residential agriculture in order to become more self-sufficient, live off the land, want to raise animals for personal benefit, eggs and animal meat. So, uh, as you know, AR-one is pretty much unrestricted as far as agricultural uses. There are a few, and I did address this with the, my approval statement, things like she did mention possibly selling some stuff to neighbors and all that, and that's fine, but roadside stands like that are limited to five-hundred square feet in area, so you can't have one that's too big. But other than that, there are not very many restrictions on agriculture in AR-one. There is on R-two, which she is now, but it loosens it up quite a bit for AR-one, for agricultural uses.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion up front here? If there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion. Have a motion approved by Mr. Harris, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Nick, those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. Again, this will go before the commission, what's the date for the commission?
Let's see, it looks like, uh,
Eighteenth.
The eighteenth?
I believe so.
Of November.
Yes.
All right, so eighteenth of November, okay. All right, moving on.
We do know that no roosters are allowed up there.
That's under R-two.
Yeah, just go on AR-one.
All right. Okay, item two, application twenty-four dash twenty-three S Dusty Davis applicant, twenty-five thirty-nine North Expressway, nine point one-five acres located in landlot one-o-two of the third land district. The applicant is requesting a special except, special exception for a semi-truck dealership. Is Mr. Davis here, he's out there, he's ready.
I'm ready, yes, sir, how y'all doing this evening? Dusty Davis, twenty-five thirty-nine North Expressway, Griffin, Georgia. Back at the end of August, I had spoken to some, somebody in the zoning department for Spalding County, and I was verbally told that I was okay to do a semi-truck dealership. However, at the time, there was an issue with the septic system, it was covered by asphalt for the previous tenant travel count. So I was informed, my realtor and I, Kathy Slate, I do have the documentation, that was emailed back in two thousand twenty-one, that they had covered that, and I was told that would be an issue. I've spoken to Mr. David in length throughout the past month or two about what we're planning on doing. It is strictly sales, there will be no mechanic work performed on the property. Everything will be done on the asphalt, nothing on the grass in the back. And that's, that's the plan. Whatever you guys tell me I need to do, if you approve this request, I will, I will abide by your rules.
I have one question, Mr. Chairman. So you were told that you had to get a special exception in order, even though you were told in advance by the realtor or whoever you were buying from it, that, that it was okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Then when you were told that you had to get the special exception, how many trucks were there then?
It's about the same, it's probably trucks and trailers, about twenty pieces of equipment at that time.
At the time that you learned that you needed to have the exception?
Yes, ma'am. And I brought, I've got probably eighty more roughly to bring in, I've not done that because I've been waiting on this.
Any other questions for Dusty?
I have no other questions. I'd be glad to make a motion.
Okay, thank you, we'll get the staff report.
Okay.
Is, is there no one else to speak?
No, sir.
Just checking.
So yes, I had spoken with Mr. Davis over the past couple of months on this. Really not sure about the verbal conversations on that, it definitely was not me. So I don't know all the history there. Some of this had started before I came on board. But anyway, we have a situation here where this potential lease, there's trucks out there. You know, just going out there and looking at the property and looking at the surroundings around there. You have Chronic next door, you have, is it Naphide, butchered that name, truck place across the highway there. So you have several of these type of businesses already there. Had this been normal C-one B zoning that it was rezoned to back in January of two thousand twenty-one, it's an allowed use. However, when they rezoned it to that back in January of two thousand twenty-one as for the travel world or travel camper world that was out there for a time that went out of business, one of the conditions it had on there was the use should be limited to the use as proposed in the application. At that time, the At that time, the v, application was very specific, and you do have it in your packet here that the proposed use was RV sales, rent, and service. So based on that approval condition from January two thousand twenty-one that went along with the rezoning, the use was strictly limited to that and nothing else. So with that, that place going out of business, uh, the zoning restrictions were still in place. So that's one of those situations where it's, it's fairly rare for that to happen, but that was indeed the case. That is the correct interpretation of the code. Those, that limitation on the use was still held sway. So that's the situation we're at right now. As I said, that use for the RV world, world was approved. So in looking at the property based on Mr. Davis's application, I had some following points that came to mind about this. You know, to me, a lot, a lot of this is a visual issue, the visual impact of this. As I said, we have Chronic right next door with a Jeep place and a Naphide truck equipment across this highway from here. Will large trucks have any worse visual impact than the recent RVs that fill the parking lot? Is it more advantageous to have an active tenant on the property versus having an empty building and parking lot, which could have maintenance issues? The property was unoccupied long-term. Truck sales are an outright permitted use on any other C ones, B zone property in the county that are not subject to overlays. And Naphide across the highway is a good example of an attractive business that has many trucks displayed. They have a lot of trucks, but they do have some nice landscaping there at the entrance. So those were my considerations in recommending Mr. Davis's, um, application for approval. I did have some approval conditions attached to it. Number one, no, should the board choose to approve it, that is. Number one, no parking of vehicles shall occur within the right-of-way. Number two, approved use is for sales only. No repair garage or truck stop allowed. Number three, there should be planted an evergreen hedge along the front property line approved by the community, Community Development Director, Proter Planting. And number four, any new signage shall conform to the county assigned ordinance. That is my report on the application.
Mr. Chair, could you also ask our zoning attorney if there are any additional considerations that should be made with respect to North Expressway overlay?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to, um, I'm sorry, Dr. Steve, I wanted to go over that and follow up with David's explanation. Between the time travel camp was zoned and the time Mr. Davis acquires the property, we passed North Expressway Improvement District. NEID makes any use with unenclosed outside storage, a special exception use, irrespective of what the underlying zoning district is. So that's the reason David properly sent him through as a special exception. Now, that said, he will have to comply, now that the special exception is being done, with the requirements of NEID. So David will have to mon, David's office will have to monitor this and make certain he's in compliance with that. And that is the reason, Mr. Davis, that you got caught in between an old ordinance and having to go to a special exception.
I, I understand. Again, I, I apologize. I brought inventory in. I don't even have a dealer's license yet. So I cannot sell vehicles. No business is being done. Equipment has came in and out, but nothing, nothing, no income or revenue has been, has been at that dealer's, the, the location. I don't have a sign up yet. Um, am I there a couple of days a week? Yes. Trying to get things cleaned up. We've got equipment coming in, smaller equipment to clean the parking lot. We've already cleaned the back property up that we don't plan on using. It was grown about six foot high, and, um, we're getting some fence repairs done. I've not yet talked to the neighbor, but no complaints have been made that I, that I know of. And, you know, I, I, we plan on keeping it upright. And like I say, Mr. David, if there's any shrubbery or any kind of landscaping you guys want me to do up front, I'll do it. No problem.
If I could add one more point, when it came through in two thousand twenty-one, one of the main problems was that travel camp, before getting approval, had paved over the septic tank. Now, I've talked with this, uh, talked about this with, uh, the Board of Health, and basically Kelly's position is it's paved over, there's nothing we can do about it. And, um, when it, when it quits being useful, they'll have to dig it up and pull the pavement off.
There is access to that system, uh, because we got it, we had it cleaned out last week.
Do you have a manhole or some kind of access point?
Two, two manholes, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I went over there. I think I passed you when I drove in and I parked my Forester, and you drove by me.
I, I thought I recognized you. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And then I had a hard time turning around, and I'm really good at driving my Forester. But I had to up and back and up and back two times because of those huge vehicles that are parked there. And I just...
Well, I'll fix that. Next time you come in, I'll make sure you can get in and out very easily.
My concern was the visual. There's no reason why that vehicle's sales could not be there, according to the ordinance, and because you're here before us today to make sure that it's done right. I appreciate that very much.
Yes, ma'am.
But it does need to be masked in some way.
Yes, ma'am.
And care must be taken as people come and go, that they can get in and get out.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there enough space on that lot to get those additional units on there that you're expecting?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
It's gonna be tight, though, isn't it?
Yes, sir. It, well, this, we'll, we'll keep it, we'll keep it organized, but it'll be tight. The more, the better, if you guys will allow it.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
I think the visual that you're talking about is the whole reason that we wound up with NEID. Because the North Expressway looked like crap. And it has looked that way for a long time. And we are trying to make a difference on that.
I did notice, though, Frank, he, things are neatly organized out there on the lot now. You can't argue about that. Okay. Any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion for approval with staff's conditions.
Okay, have a motion to approve with the conditions laid out by the staff. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second by Nick. Those in favor signify raising your right hand. It's unanimous. Okay. As we announced at the top of the meeting, we're, um, tabling the item three, so we're down to number four. Application twenty-four dash thirty-two Z William P. Wilson, Jr., Minerva Land LLC owner, thirty-two twenty North McDonough Road, Griffin, Georgia. Five hundred and sixty-two acres located in landlot one fifteen, one sixteen, one forty-one, one forty-two, one forty-seven, one forty-eight, and one forty-nine of the second land district. The applicant is requesting a rezoning application from R two and A R one to Master Plan Community Village Node. We have someone here to speak for this.
Yes, sir, we did. Yeah, here they come. Hey, everyone.
Do you need a break?
I do. I'm Brian Davidson of Minerva USA, two-two-nine-two Henderson Mill Road, Atlanta. I have printed copies of what will be up here, if it's okay up on the next.
Sure.
Thanks, Brian. And it's a larger version of the plan than that. Okay. Thanks. I'll dive right in. I'll try to be fairly succinct here. I think there may be a fair few comments, and then I'm happy to answer anybody's questions afterwards. This property is, uh, what you see outlined in green there. It is on the one fifty-five corridor running south from seventy-five. So the property is five hundred and sixty-three acres. It is the basically remaining section of the Willis, Wilson Family Farm. The farm, the family's been on the property, uh, for about a hundred years. Multiple generations, obviously. Over the years, they've sold off portions of the property into smaller residential lots. And here is an aerial photo, uh, showing you the property. Basically, the north edge of the property is the county line. Everything north of this property is Henry County. So it runs east and west all the way across there, and then the county line sort of cuts south in the, uh, preservation land to the east of us. And you'll see that most of that dark land that you see on there is owned by the Henry County Water and Sewer Authority. It's the protected land, um, that they did back twenty years ago when they flooded the, uh, the reservoirs. So it wraps around the property on the east end, and it also runs along the entire south end of the property. This will give you sort of a, a visual evolution of, uh, the growth pattern towards, uh, this site. And we'll, I'll switch gears after that and talk to you about your long-range comprehensive plan. So this is February nineteen ninety-nine, uh, obviously twenty-five years ago, and there is very little of anything in the area other than, uh, farmland and a few scattered houses, even up at the interchanges at one fifty-five and Highway twenty, uh, north of us there. Three years later, um, you can see the massive amount of industrial that was already built in that three-year window, all around the interchange, um, starting to push development south towards both Spalding County and this property. Here is, uh, seven years later. So if you can see the transition from there to there, and if you look at everywhere, the industrial is spreading down. The development has now come down to the Bill Gardner Parkway exit as well, and subdivisions all over the area infilling the property. Virtually all the development in this area has been in Henry County. There is some in Spalding, but, uh, Henry has been the, uh, the majority of it. And here's where we are now in two thousand twenty-three. And it's getting to the point north of us where there's not that many, uh, unbuilt pieces of land left. When you see, uh, large amounts of the dark trees are, um, are, you know, bottom lands, wetlands, that sort of thing. There is still a big Nut Family Farm, uh, which is on the sort of west side of the map. But for the most part, the land is, is being consumed, and I also believe there's a zoning application in, on that Nut Family land in Henry as well. So that progression of growth basically brings you to your own two thousand forty-two future development map. This is your comprehensive plan that was finalized last year, I think with about a year, a year and a half worth of work by the county. Large number of public meetings, uh, different consultants on growth, development, transportation, everything else. And the basic thrust of your plan is, uh, to focus denser development in the county in that northeastern quadrant. That orange section is, uh, what's called the, uh, Aran Bay Sun City Character Area. That, that's, you know, I would say plus or minus, uh, ten percent of the county. And that's where the county basically is targeted to focus growth. So in that, in that section, uh, they're basically targeting medium-density residential with the recommended range of one to four units per acre, uh, and the ancillary commercial uses that would come with that. The area to the south of that, the brighter yellow one, is one unit per acre, and then it, it tapers off in each direction. The green is either one unit per, uh, two acres or one unit per three acres, the further away you get. So the, so I think with all the studies and all the traffic patterns and growth patterns, the county came to the, the obvious conclusion that the growth is coming at you rapidly down, uh, I seventy-five. And that's the most logical area, uh, for the county to, to, um, promote the growth that essentially is inevitable in this direction. Again, here is that area on the overall county plan. Then you can see how it fits overall within the county. That red oval is sort of roughly where this property is located. It's essentially from e, the east, uh, east of one fifty-five over to about the county line. This is the next page in your comprehensive plan, which outlines all of the desired criteria for any project that happens in, in that character, in that zone. You can see the density is circled, as is the, our proposed zoning, the V N zoning is compatible. And you see a check mark beside every single, uh, design criteria. We've incorporated every single one of them in, into our plan. So we're essentially, uh, exactly mirroring your long-range plan that you did one year ago. Our total overall density is, uh, about two point six units per acre. If you take out the, uh, senior housing project, the more traditional housing, uh, single-family lots is about two point two units per acre. The property is currently zoned mainly R two. There's a little bit way in the east end that's, that's A R two. What we're proposing is to rezone it to V N, uh, which is a use that allows a, a variety of different uses. Some are automatically used, and then some are, uh, approved, subject to special exception. It's a, it's a sort of a diverse zoning category that allows you to, to create a, a mixed-use type project. We've also asked for, uh, a couple of, of specific variances. One in particular, this, this middle point actually covers two variances, one on lot width and one on house size. And that request is because we have a bit more than half the project we've proposed to do as age-targeted, um, active adult housing, so fifty-five and older. Um, and we'll talk a little bit about that later. One of the desires of that age-targeted, uh, house is people just don't want, uh, huge houses. It's all one-story homes, and it's a little bit essentially matching, uh, the smaller side in Sun City Peach Street, which are, the lots are exactly the same, they're forty feet wide, and they are, the houses in there are about twelve hundred and fifty square feet to about fourteen fifty. Then they have a mid-size and an upper size. The other, the bottom is a special exception, uh, to allow an assisted living and nursing home facility, which you'll see when I get to the plan. It's a site that's essentially about twenty acres. We're requesting to do a single building there, which is the full continuing care continuum from, um, uh, from independent living through to assisted living, uh, through to a nursing home. Overall, here's, uh, suggested recommendations that should you and the board of commissioners recommend in approval of this. We are recommending, uh, and/or agree to caps on the different uses. And these are the numbers here. And they, they match the plan that you will, you'll, you'll see. And then for the, uh, age-targeted homes, because we're asking for the smaller size, we want you to be aware that we're not trying to do just a hundred percent, uh, all, all small homes. We see it being three or four different, uh, sizes and price points, again, like Sun City. So you get a diversity of, 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 of price points and home sizes. So what we proposed is that, um, a minimum of seventy percent of the homes that are age-targeted must be at least fifteen hundred square feet, and a minimum of thirty-five percent, so half of those, would be greater than two thousand feet. That essentially is roughly a third small, third medium, and a third large. That, that would be, um, should, should you agree with this proposal, that, that, those would be additional commission, or conditions that we would suggest that you, uh, add to our application, basically to try to set some parameters around what we're going to do. And then this is the concept plan, and you also have it in front of you in eleven-by-seventeen print. On this, there's, uh, I'll try to walk you through the different components. So the blue area is the, uh, senior housing complex. That's, that's one building, two-hundred-and-fifty units of, uh, assisted living and through to nursing home. The two purple blobs that are kind of in the middle are two different amenity areas, one for active adult and one for traditional family. There's, there's two entrances onto one fifty-five. And then basically, if you, if you draw a line from the north entrance, so say right on the bottom side of the blue piece, right now, the way we have it drawn is everything on the north side is, uh, for traditional family homes. And everything to the south is active adult. It came up in a, in a community meeting, uh, last night that because that north piece connects to the back onto Amelia Road, they've actually asked us to switch the uses around and make the active adult that north section and have the traditional on the one fifty-five corridor, which makes total sense. So, uh, that is something we'll do when we revise the plan. It just came up last night. That'll dramatically reduce the traffic impact onto Amelia. It's basically designed to, with the main central thoroughfare road, to bring the traffic, uh, through the community and out onto one fifty-five. We did a fairly major traffic study. There are some improvements needed on one fifty-five, most notably, uh, southbound left turn lanes into the two entrances. And then one off-site improvement was recommended as well, um, which is at the corner of one fifty-five and Teeman Road. It's right now, it's just a stop sign and it's hitting, they use the letters A through, uh, F in terms of their ability to handle traffic. And that intersection is rated a, a D right now. So it's, it's pushing its limit and people can't get out to turn, uh, set, mainly to turn left or northbound from Teeman onto one fifty-five. So the traffic consultant has recommended that, uh, we be requested by yourselves to, to install either traffic lights there or a roundabout. It is a DOT highway, so it needs their approval, but they should have no problem with it whatsoever. And that's just south off, off-site off the property. You know, I, I think that's, that's it. I think, you know, oh, sorry, I guess maybe we'll go on a few more things. There's somewhere around a hundred and seventy, a hundred and eighty acres of open space in, in the project. The zoning requires about twenty-four, twenty-five acres, so we're, we're a mile above it. And then also the site has the addition, additional benefit of having a huge amount of frontage on the Cuba Hacha, uh, trail system. All that sort of brighter green you see across the bottom and then also in the top right corner, that's all that Henry County preservation land. It pretty dramatically reduces our impact. So for the most part, we front on one fifty-five or on the, um, on the preservation land. Probably the people that are, um, the most affected by it, I think, I know definitely there's some in the room here today are the people south of us. That's Amelia Road that runs, uh, through the eastern part of the property to the southbound. It was all land that was owned by the Wilson family, uh, going back and was cut up into lots. I think that section was done in the mid-nineties, I believe. And, uh, so they're all, they're all nice houses for the most part on, on medium-sized lots, anywhere from three acres, I think, up to twenty-five acres. And I would say their probably primary concern would be traffic and the condition of their road. That was one of the main reasons why we, um, I, I don't know whose idea it was. I don't know if the gentleman's here today, but the, the concept of switching the active adult to that side to reduce the traffic onto that road was, was a good one. So, uh, we're happy to do that. Oh, and then last, I guess last component is that little piece on the west side of one fifty-five, um, is a townhome parcel. It's separate from the overall, uh, project. It's, it's two-hundred-and-ten townhomes as it's drawn. And then there's, there's buffer land on the backside of it as well and along one fifty-five frontage. I think that, that's basically it. Oh, you know, I can, I can show you houses, the traditional houses. This is, this is another, um, thing that came up in our, in a meeting last week with the board of commissioners on a different property. They're trying to find ways to try to improve overall quality of, uh, things that get developed in the county and try to give yourself tools. I think, uh, Mr. Galloway has been leading that charge for a while. And we have basically proposed to try to work with them to kind of craft a set of design standards that we would be, um, subject to on this property. But then we would also encourage the county to enforce across other projects that, that are done in the county. And then, and then here's, here's some statistics about the property. I think the people that were here, or went to the thing last night, we didn't have this for you, but, we, we ran projected tax revenues and this will kind of give you an impact of what this project will, uh, do, both in adding people and school-aged kids and also adding to the revenues. So the NT is North Tahu Liga, that's, that's this project. When it's built out at today's rates, it's projected to add about ten percent of the overall tax revenue of the county. But it'll only add mainly because it's active adult and, uh, and then a lot of the senior housing as well, won't add as many people. It'll only increase population by four and a half percent and housing units by about five-point-two percent. When you go to school taxes, um, the projected, so that, that overall income, if you go back there, that was, the full nine-point-one million includes Spalding County's operations plus school taxes plus fire. So there's a school proportional share of that. That's the school budgets, uh, the twenty, we use the twenty-twenty-five budget for the, the number. So it's an eleven percent increase in revenues to the school board, but with a projected increase of only five-point-five percent of kids. So a net, a net gain on income versus the number of kids being added. If you go to the county tax revenue, it'll add right in the range of about four million dollars, again, at today's, um, millage rates, the ones that were just passed in the last few weeks, which is roughly a nine percent increase. The other big number is your, all your permit fees and your impact fees right now would add up to eleven-point-seven million. I'm hearing rumors of them being proposed to be increased, but that's today's, uh, numbers. Fire tax revenues as well. And then when you even get down to the water and sewer authority, they'll generate about two-point-seven million of tap fees plus about eight-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars a year of revenue. So an eight-point-four percent increase to their revenue line as well. And then it was also asked, what happens with the developments that have been, the county's been promoting over the last fifteen or twenty years in this northeastern quadrant of, of the county? Census tract sixteen oh-two-point-zero-two, um, includes all of Minerva's prior Spalding County developments. And it, sixteen oh-two is split into two, so this is everything to the west of one fifty-five, okay? This, this does not include everything to the east of one fifty-five because there's really not much there. There's this farmland and fifty houses maybe. So this includes, for the most part, Sun City and Harren Bay and then some of the land in between. The median household income in that census tract is eighty-five thousand dollars. The entire rest of Spalding is fifty-four. So this quadrant of the county has fifty-five percent higher median household income and actually seventy-five percent higher per capita income than anywhere else in the county. So all these new developments are bringing in, uh, higher incomes, which generally means more disposable income and, and more spending on area businesses and, and services. Educational level, you can see the impact there as well. Bachelors degree level is double. High school, which is not up there, is about ninety-four percent versus about eighty-three percent for the rest of the, uh, the county. And then there's the average, uh, house value. And now that's what we've projected for our community. That's taking all the different small, medium, and large homes, putting rough estimates on pricing on them and averaging it out versus Spalding average price. So we're basically projecting to be building, uh, homes that are essentially double the price of the average price in Spalding. The county, the county really needs affordable housing in a big way, I think. This is not the location for it, I don't think. This is the, the path of your, uh, your growth, your best access to the interstate. It's good land next to the, the preservation area. And, and it's more expensive land. I do, I do think as a county policy, um, it would probably be wise to encourage more affordable housing in, in various places. I don't see us, uh, being able to do it here with all the amenities, common area stuff, uh, design criteria, everything else. It's just going to push the house prices up. But it, it would be something I'd, I'd love to see the county do and, at, at some point. So that's, um, that, that's basically, that's basically it in a nutshell. I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has, either from you guys or from the, from the audience.
I like everything about it with the townhouses. So why did you choose to put townhouses? Because it's an odd-shaped piece of property?
Yeah, it was the other side of the road. There is a market for townhouses there, there, but we have actually, um, it's funny you ask that. We, we've actually redesigned that. We didn't have it done in time for the submittal. And on that, we can do a hundred-and-one traditional single-family lots, which we think we will amend the application to. So should you also add that as a condition, that the townhome pod be replaced with, with, um, the single-family lots? I would be totally in favor of it. I think it's a, it's a better use. It'll drop, it'll drop those revenue numbers a little bit. You'll drop from two-hundred units down, I think there's two-hundred-and-ten townhomes. It drops to a hundred-and-one single-family, but different product. The, the townhomes that were done, um, not to pick on another project, but the, the ones that were done at Grayson Park, uh, further up, I don't think were, were managed very well aesthetically or planting. I know that, um, these two gentlemen here are working on trying to, um, resolve some of that retroactively. I think some stuff got through your prior planning staff, unfortunately. But it's kind of created a, a, a bad name, I guess, for, for townhomes and probably rightly so. They, they should be hidden away. I think one thing we will probably do is, we, we own some of the land between it and the highway, is start planting some, uh, evergreen trees and vegetation to kind of hide it away ourselves for the same probably reason everybody in the county feels, so, yeah.
I have, uh, I actually have friends and family who are looking for one-story townhome developments in Spalding County because they would like to be in Spalding County, having visited with us here. And they appreciate the county for what it is, but the ability for old folks like me to find a place that is one-story and yet in a connected development.
Yeah.
So that there is opportunity and it's affordable. So while we're talking about affordable housing, and this is a beautiful development for those who can afford to have the single-family residential with something of a, a forty-foot width lot, et cetera, there are folks that are looking for alternative developments that could be done in a good way and could be landscaped in an appropriate way. But not hidden back behind the other folks who can afford.
Yeah, I totally agree with you. Your, your ordinance is a little challenging to work with, to, to fit that product into a category that is semi-detached and, and there's different, we call it active-adult style housing. There's semi-detached two side-by-side, or there's four, four packs that come together that are designed so you have a fairly small yard but an outdoor space and then a nice house and efficient, usually they're one-car garage instead of two, and then one more park on the street. And yeah, we, I, I would love to do those. We, we have contemplated doing a project of that nature on land that is on, um, Baptist Camp Road in the village node in front of Sun City. We have not formally submitted it yet. We've, we've floated it, we've talked to the residents of Sun City a little bit about it, but we haven't made any formal application. They're, they're, they're smaller, more efficient, more affordable, um, and one-story. And, and still, you know, pedestrian-friendly and everything. There's a lot of design things you have to do. You have to keep the slopes to a minimum and all, all those design things, yeah. I, I definitely, I agree with you. I think there's a market absolutely in Spalding for that product.
And I have one other comment. I'm sorry I was distracted by the drip when you were describing where the pods were that were for the fifty-five-plus, uh, communities. And so I got a little distracted by that.
If I can, okay, uh, if you take, take a look at the blue pod, which is the, the actual senior building, that road that comes in there, just draw a line from there east and west, okay? So everything north of that is one group and everything south is the other. The way this plan is drawn, we have the active adult all on the south part along one fifty-five and traditional family on the north. The residents on Amelia and Apple Road asked us to switch that in our proposal, which makes a lot of sense. And so we, we will do that. So basically, the active adult will be that entire strip on the, on the north end. And then the traditional family will be on the south end.
I was just concerned about how far away we get old folks from the amenity center.
Yeah, we actually have designed it so there's two separate ones. That's what the two purple areas are, separated. There's always, in, in communities like Sun City around the country, there's always a debate about how much access that there is for kids. And a lot, a lot of, um, age-restricted communities have specific time access when you can bring your grandkids, but not all the time. I think in, in this case, uh, the, the concept is just to have two totally separate ones that are, serve two different clientele, I guess you'd say.
Okay, any other comment? Go ahead, man.
It appears that we're going to have two-hundred-and-ten townhomes. Are they going to be in compliance with the current?
Yeah, they, they, they would be. We've asked for one variance, which is to change from a rear garage to a front garage. With townhomes, I like to have the garage at the front, so in the rear, you can have a private yard for people versus having roads on both sides. But based off Mr. Yeoman's, uh, request earlier, and we've already, we've had feedback from the community, we're planning on with, uh, replacing the, the townhome section with traditional, uh, what, um, traditional homes. So that section that is on the west side of one fifty-five would be deletion of two-hundred-and-ten townhomes and replaced with a hundred-and-one traditional family homes. We just, it, it just came up in the last, uh, day or two, and we just haven't changed, updated the plan yet, but.
Okay, so basically the only difference is the location of the door.
Sorry, the?
The garage door.
Yeah, well, if it was townhomes, but since, since we are, are willing to just withdraw the townhomes and replace it with single-family, then that becomes an, an irrelevant point because there would be no town.
So there's not going to be any townhomes?
Correct, if that's the condition you recommend it with.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll reserve the right, call you back up, Ryan.
Sure.
We have a number of people that have signed up to speak. You'll get to speak, but I thought it might be better to go ahead and hear the staff report so you know the, the whole story.
So just speaking purely for the rezoning, we'll get to the special exception variances later. It does comply with the Harren Bay Character Area up here, which is basically mostly in the northeast part of the county, which is basically saying, according to the comp plan, that if you're going to have medium to fairly high-density residential, this is the place we want to have it in the future. So it does line up with that, uh, element of the comp plan. It does mention detached housing, so it does not mention attached. It does mention detached housing, so it does not mention attached, as its townhomes. I do agree as well, and had that reflected in the staff report, that the townhome portion should probably not be. A lot of the detached housing in this is active-adult, which serves a different demographic than the detached housing in Grayson Park. You can't always say that about the townhomes, however. So, you'd have essentially the Grayson Park townhomes up here, just to the north of these townhomes, and it seems redundant and probably overkill there as far as a townhome. So, I would definitely suggest negating that, and it sounds like they already have an alternative plan for that anyway. There is a lot of green space and everything already preserved, thanks to the Henry County Water Authority preservation land. So, there'd be an enormous amount of existing woodlands and things kept. You saw the revenue numbers he was talking about. What I was provided earlier, a couple of weeks ago, in terms of revenue, right now, because it's an old farm in the conservation tax category, only provides $6,734 of annual property tax. So, not a whole lot going on there, so I think it's definitely worth considering for So, that's basically it, as far as the rezoning, as far as my comments.
Okay. All right. We're gonna call you up. Please hold your comments to about three minutes, and if you're repeating what's already been said, then, you know, we got it first time it came by. So, who is the first to come?
Mr. Chair, Jim Castelaw is up first this evening. Mr. Castelaw, as you're coming forward, if you would, please step to the mic and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jim Castelaw. I live at ten-ten Amelia Road, Locust Grove. I have approximately eight acres, and I've been in Spalding County for about thirty years. I am strictly opposed to the development in the Amelia Road area, not necessarily on 155, although that's gonna be... Create a lot of problems with the county, but primarily, my three concerns are traffic, number one, noise, number two, and environmental issues, number three, because the... Part of the proposed area is surrounded by Henry County Water Authority, and I can't... I haven't been... We went to a meeting last night with Minerva Properties and asked a question about environmental issues, so I think that's something that the county should really look at, as far as the potential impact of the environment. You can't argue with the revenue, I understand that. I serve on the Spalding County Board of Equalization, so I understand the importance of that. But, that's what I have... I am opposed.
Thank you, sir. Lawrence Weeks?
Yes, I'm Lawrence Weeks. I live at twenty-nine-six-six Teeman Road. Main thing I'm concerned with, all these homes are getting here, high prices. We don't have starter homes for young families, and the homes so far, I've seen, Minerva Building starts off at about $400,000 a year. Tell me any young family that can go to a $400,000 a year home. I've heard people get up this mic and say, "Well, we need homes for teachers in the county." I don't know a teacher that could buy a $400,000 house. But, we need... Think about starter homes for them, and we don't need houses in clusters. We need little acreage around them, so they're here when they have kids and stuff like that. Enough land that, if they wanted to, they'd build another bedroom on the house. But, you can't do that when you put three houses to acre. And you gotta consider about the future, whether people are gonna do in a few years when they have kids. They gonna move somewhere else and leave that house. They ain't gonna tell them how many houses that's been built in Henry County that the government is paying people's payments now on, because people's left them. But, that's my main concern, is the kids, and people be able to afford a house. And I've heard a lady that's on the boards a few years ago, said they couldn't have never lived in this county and had the life she had if they hadn't be able to live in a small house, 'cause her daddy couldn't afford it with their kids. So, that's my thing, main thing, and also, the traffic problem it's gonna cause in my area also. They've already got Sun City Peachtree and all that on Teeman Road. I don't know how many houses go down Teeman Road. I'm gonna need a red light in my drive for long, and I'll be calling y'all. I'll call somebody, and I'll aggravate somebody, so they get me... Y'all can get me an officer out there, so I can get in and out my drive.
Thank you, Mr. Weeks.
Well, I will call you, Steve.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Justin and Sierra Scott. Justin and Sierra Scott. Shane Busby?
I appreciate this opportunity to address the commission. I have been living in my... I'm sorry. Shane Busby, one-twenty-one Sam Solomon Road. I'm trying to be short.
I hear you. Yes, sir.
Of course, I am opposed to this, because I think I will reflect most of what my neighbors feel. We moved out here into this area to have... To get away from urban sprawl, to get away from the destruction of the countryside, to get away from pollution, to get away from traffic, to get away from sirens constantly back and forth, all the road noise and those kind of things. And I think most people here would agree with me. That's why they moved to this area. I know one thing for certain. The Wilson family wishes to dispose of this property, and they will. I'm not foolish enough to think something is gonna happen. Because of that, I find, in talking with the current developer who is working with us, he is very... They seem very receptive to having our input. It's inevitable that what is going to happen. These gentlemen have been very nice to listen to our concerns and to try to address them. Like I say, I know the Wilsons are gonna do something with this property. I would prefer that we have a developer that would listen to the citizens that are affected by this, our water quality, the fact that we're all on wells and sewage systems, and we've talked about... We talked to the developer about retention ponds, which we don't approve of, because that's gonna affect our water quality. So, there's gotta be something done there. So, what I would like to propose is that, if this is going to be approved, that the residents be able to have an advisory board or an advisory group to work with the developer to make sure that our quality of life, and what they are trying to propose as far as quality of life for senior adults, we, the fifty-five-and-over active community, is to give them the opportunity to be... Have input into this, because I know the commissioners are gonna do... Are going to take our concerns into consideration. But, like I say, I'm really concerned about water quality, environmental issues, which Mr. Castelaw brought up, and how it's gonna affect our quality of life. I know this part of the county, we are a very small community, and we feel neglected anyway. The infrastructure is not maintained properly. We have... I've been told by one of the deputies who came to my home when I called, that they only have two deputies to cover this area. I don't know how big an area that is. He did not expound on that. But, I know from talking with the road people that are out there working on the roads, they are strained. They have a very limited number of pieces of equipment and people, and I think there are sixty-two roads in Spalding County, dirt roads, that they were in... That they were charged with responsibility of maintaining. I know several years back that the T-splotch that was approved, many of us who lived on dirt roads, which were not maintained, so we were willing to vote for the T-splotch, because the county was going to pave a good many of these roads. I find that that has not happened. What happened on Amelia is chip and seal. It was... The builder, the guy that was doing it, told me that this road should last ten years. It didn't last six months.
Okay, let's move on. We're talking about the development now.
Yeah, okay. All right. Well, like I say, the development is, like I say, I'm concerned about the runoff.
Because we're not taking care of the property we already have, so that's...
I won't run down that rabbit hole. Let somebody else do that. Anyway, we are concerned about stormwater runoff, that that needs to be addressed. We are concerned about retention ponds. We are concerned about traffic. We're concerned about the noise and the confusion and the congestion it's gonna be, and the loss of countryside, which we treasure that. That's why we moved to that area.
Thank you, Mr. Busby. Mary Busby? All right, thank you. Tim Daniel?
Probably echoing what Mr. Busby said, but most of us can appreciate the Wilsons' property, because we bought property when it changed hands thirty years ago, to get us some elbow room out in the country, and it varies anywhere from, I think most of these folks probably got anywhere from three acres to five. I got nineteen, some twenty, fifty, I think even up to a hundred, you know? And the... What we try to escape from is tracking us down and gonna surround us, you know? And the traffic is already very heavy, and the state's already come through on 155 and tinkered around for the last five or ten years, and finally, I guess, they've finished what they're gonna do. And would still have serious traffic issues about any time of the day. I can't imagine, you know, when you... Just this many people with homes, and that many people times two cars, and you take fifteen-hundred houses, and say, times two cars, and then FedEx trucks, UPS trucks, garbage man, Amazon's delivering pizzas and breakfast now, I think. The school buses, it just seems like it's gonna be a traffic nightmare. I don't know how it can be addressed, honestly. You know, I know this is on the outskirts of the county, so maybe Henry County's gonna suffer more than Spalding trying to handle it. I don't really know, but I challenge you to just go down there in the morning and try it yourself, and see what you think.
Thank you, sir. Lee and Pat Peterson?
Mr. Chair, for this gentleman's...
My name is Lee Peterson.
Just a second, sir.
I live down Amelia Road.
Just a second, sir.
Pardon?
Wait, just a second, sir. Sorry.
Who is your county commissioner, and does he know you?
Pardon?
Who is your county commissioner, sir?
And does he know you?
I couldn't...
Who is your county commissioner?
Well, I live, you know, Spalding County, I guess. I don't know.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, I don't know.
No, that's okay, sir. State your name and your address, please.
Okay, my name's Lee Peterson. I live at eleven-oh-five Amelia Road. And I'd like to show you something on this map up here. Above that line, Henry County on Amelia Road, the people all the way to 155 have two to so many acres, ten acres, some people do. Below here, right in here, I live out right here. I have three acres. Most people, all the way out here, except to this point, have acres. This map has twenty-five acres. I have three. The man next to me has three. The man next to me has three or four, or six, or eleven. This quality of life that we, like this man just said, that we have, we bought out there so that we could have something like that. To put all those townhouses and cram those townhouses in there like that is just a slap in the face. Now, I have no problem with them putting three-acre homes out there. No problem whatsoever. Do it like we have. You know what I mean? We spend our hard-earned money to have that, like that. And just to take and put all those homes in there is gonna devalue what we have. Who doesn't want that across the street, practically across the street from there, wanting to go to sell my house? They gonna up my value, because people come out there to have acreage, to have fun. This is our lifestyle. And some of you could probably know that yourself, if you have land yourself. You know what I mean? You wouldn't want someone to come out and build something like that right on top of you, if you had three, four, or five acres. I'm just saying. You know, I don't have any problem with them developing land. I have a problem with something that looks like that. You know, it just doesn't get it. Just like they said, the traffic right now, when seventy-five backs up, where's it go? It goes either here down the road, or right up our road. It goes right up our road, because they got GPS, that's where traffic goes. It's backed up. And that happens once a week, just to start with. And just saying that, you know, I have no problem, but make it nice for everybody. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Rachel Stroud?
My name is Rachel Stroud. I am one of the executive board members of Griffin Gun Club at five-fifty Amelia Road, three-oh-two-two-three. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization located on Amelia Road, and I'm here to represent the Griffin Gun Club, our nearly two-hundred-and-fifty club members, their families, and the other various other vast community members that we support with operations at our club. Sorry, I'm very bad at speaking in front of people, so I have a few notes. We are firmly in opposition of this concept of a plan, especially considering that there is currently already a fifty-five-plus community that is still under construction, that has over fifty homes sitting on the market right now, so I'm not sure why we need another one right across the road. As we've heard from other folks tonight, this project poses significant environmental and traffic concerns that cannot be overlooked, not to mention how we saw in this gentleman's fine presentation, that a majority of this land that's proposed for development is actually backing directly up to the Towalaga wetlands, that is home to vital ecosystems. And from what I heard, it has been preserved for hundreds of years, and they're planning to flatten it, killing all of the native species, and probably putting in cheap invasion species, so that'll hurt our animals as well. The construction for this development of this size is gonna clear all the land... Sorry, I have a lot of notes. The clearing is gonna cause runoff, that the construction site, for the construction site, and once the roads are paved, all of this drainage is gonna go downstream and lead it... Leading ultimately to water quality issues. Looking at traffic, as we've heard from multiple people tonight, Amelia Road, I don't know if any of y'all have been out there recently, but Amelia Road is bumpy and tight turns, and it's not... Doesn't handle the current folks that live out there, so... So adding 1,500 developments, it doesn't matter which way you switch that around, whether it's the active community at the top, or the children, or I'm not exactly sure how we oriented all of that, but it's, it's not going to work. And I, I think that we've heard tonight so far from several individuals that while it's a smaller community out there, it is already an active 55-plus community. Our activities just don't include these tight homes and walking past its outdoors. So, that being said, I, I think that some of the other folks that are going to be speaking tonight will probably cover my other concerns with environment and traffic. But we've, we've heard a lot about this tonight, too, earlier, and we are, Griffin Gun Club is an entity that generates great noise, a lot of it, too. So I know that this has been an issue in the past with the development of Sun City and the residents that live in there. I, I know that they have had issues with the noise from them, and they use only shotguns at Griffin Gun Club. We are not strictly shotguns. We shoot up to 50-cal, and I don't think we have any ordinances against anything bigger. But I'm just saying, we're loud, and if that many people are coming in expecting a quiet lifestyle, it's not the area. We, people hunt out there, we have Griffin Gun Club, we host events out there, we host different sporting events, we have students at practice. Okay, I will finish up then. I just, I just urge you to consider the long-term consequences of this plan with rezoning, and I hope you'll, you will join me in opposing it. And instead of succumbing to the pressures of rapid development and frankly by a group that takes little to no regard for the environment and the community that currently exists.
Amanda Gilbert?
I'm Amanda Gilbert, and I live at 1121 Amelia Road. And I am not a good speaker, so I have to read this, but we live directly next to and across the street from the proposed village node, and I'm saddened to see such a big project coming literally next to my driveway. I worry about the quality and quantity of our drinking water as we are all on well water in this area. I'm worried about my kids' health because they swim and eat fish from a lake that's going to be directly downstream from this development. I worry about the potential crime that will be added with so many people in a small area. Heron Bay has a high call-out rate for, for police compared to other neighborhoods in Henry County, and this is supposed to be Spalding County's new Heron Bay-like community. I worry about the traffic. We already have to go all around to avoid Highway 155 and Bill Gardner because of the traffic. Our road gets people rerouted onto it when traffic on 75 is bad, including semis all the time. Our road is so full of potholes that people have to swerve all around to avoid hitting them. We have too many wrecks already for a small road. Mr. Tab Jacobs, Director with Minerva, said it himself when he was Community Development Director with Spalding County in 2019, when addressing the liquor store property zoning on Highway 155, that if the county was to go with a suburban-type sprawl development, that he didn't have a problem with that, but that we needed to be prepared from a traffic standpoint. Here we are five years later, and our traffic has not been addressed, and Minerva now wants to add to the traffic problem with high-density development of over 1,400 units. I also worry about my children's future in Spalding County. We were told at the Minerva Community Meeting that we chose to live near the city, so basically we have to live with the consequences of encroaching development. Some residents saved and worked and spent life savings to move here for this rural lifestyle, and they wanted to build here. Others, like my husband's family, have had land in this area for approximately 70 years. Some people have said they would move if this happens. I've talked to people who've said that, and for some, that's not financially possible. And then there are others like, like us who love this community and have roots here that go back for generations. We want to stay near our family on the land we love and have our kids rooted in one spot that is a quality place to live. That dream is being torn from us and others by houses built 12 feet apart in front of us and beside us. I know development happens and things change, and I wish that if this land had to be developed, that it would mirror the already existing homes of Amelia, Apple, Frog, and Sam Solomon Roads, which have homes on three to 10 acres, or, I mean, even an acre would be better. Not people crammed on as small a space as possible to get more monies for the developers and property taxes. Let's save Spalding from making the mistakes in Henry County. Let's preserve some of the rural aspect and prevent what this community will look like in the future: overpopulated, small roads, high crime rate, and packed schools. Let's protect our water and wildlife and stop these massive developments from spreading further and further out. So I'm requesting the zoning board vote no to the Towalaga Village, Village Node.
Danny Gilbert?
Daniel Gilbert, that was my wife, actually. We live at 1121 Amelia Road. Like she said, my family's owned property here, said the, the nice green spot right in the middle of all the yellow. I grew up here. My parents built a house here in 1999, and I have seen the devastation of farmland, destruction of farms, replaced with these cookie-cutter neighborhoods. And when I come home from work, come home to my kids, and I drive by there, I picture what's going to be there, and it makes me sick to my stomach. My kids play in this creek, they swim in the lake, they go fishing in this lake, and it all comes down into one bottom here. So all that runoff and all that garbage is going to come right down into where, into where we, our family spends time together. Most, well, not most, 100% of the people I've talked to, they don't think coming to this meeting is going to do any good because nobody cares what they think, and government's going to do what they want to anyway. But I, I hope that's not the case. I hope y'all are hearing us. I'm a tall guy, but I'm not near big enough to stand up to against the numbers that you saw here. I'm going to do everything I can. Appreciate your time.
Tim Meeler?
My name is Tim Meeler. I live at 42 Apple Road. I would like to start out by saying, just please pay close attention to this group of people that are here now, because when that stuff moves in, you won't hear this kind of solidarity like you have here. I'm probably one of the most senior homeowners in this whole community. I've been there for a little over 30 years, along with my neighbor Lacy, who moved next door to me. Used to, when I would get off on the 155 exit, I could be home in eight minutes. I'm lucky if I can make it in half an hour now. I don't want that kind of stuff to come any further down. I mean, his, his map up here shows you that top half that is so crowded, and that bottom half, which is what we all desired to have when we moved here. I've been married to my wife for 35 years. 30 of those years have been in this house. Half my life, over half my life, has been spent in this house. I, I built the house, it's not a house, it's a home now. I raised my son there. He's a grown man now. I don't want to lose this way of life, and I don't think anybody else here does either. I sit out at night and walk my dog while I have deer standing in the front yard. We've seen all kind of wildlife coming through there, and I understand that, that's going to come even further into our community. We have coyotes now. That kind of stuff is going to get further and further into us as more and more of this takes over. And we don't really mind that so much as we just want the quiet and the peacefulness that we have now. We don't want to change that way of life. And it's not that we don't want to have the growth, we understand that's going to happen, but can you imagine his, his demographics show that 10% of the population growth in that small, I know it's 560-something acres, but in that small area right there, it's like a nuclear bomb going off where we live. And imagine going to peaceful, quiet nights and days and having that go off. I still sleep with my doors unlocked. I mean, I, who can say that? I mean, I know we're in those areas that where he's showing so populated, nobody does that. I'm a locksmith.
Thank you for your time. Kim Meeler?
I'm going to have this lady right here straight for me. Good evening. My name is Joanna Odleng, and I currently live at 120 Oakwood Lakes Drive in Hampton, Georgia. And this gentleman started out by, the presentation by talking about the growth that Henry County has had, and I am here to tell you why I bought 43 acres on Amelia Road, to escape Henry County and the sprawl of building that has happened on the Jonesboro and Mount Carmel Road. They have added about 3,000 homes to roundabouts, and the three miles between me and the interstate is now a 30-minute trip. We bought out here over the summer, thinking that we were escaping that, and then my neighbor called me and said, hey, guess what? So a question that I would have is, you're talking about an over 55 community and that really needs a city central-type amenities. They need the senior center. Well, the closest senior center to them is going to be Hampton. That's not available to them because that's Henry County. You're, you're talking about traffic patterns on roads that were not graded for that. I've experienced that in, on the road that I live on right now, which is Mount Carmel. We have dump trucks and every other kind of truck that are traveling down this road, and the potholes are worsening and worsening and worsening. I, I really think it's a poor planning to, to set that kind of community out there when you already have two facilities or two places like Sun City and Heron Bay that do appeal to, to individuals who can't afford to live there. They are already retired, they are not working, they are not adding to that community because they, they are, they already made their money. If we're talking about tax dollars to the schools, well, I'm here to tell you that we can vote with our tax dollars. I send my grandkids to private school with my tax dollars from Henry County and not in Henry County. They go to Spalding at a private school. So we, we can remove that. You know what I'm saying? Anyway, I thank you for your time tonight. I really hope you take a chance to go out there and actually look at this property and what the impact would be.
Mr. Chairman, no one else has signed up this evening for this application?
Nice to meet you. I didn't sign up.
No, we're, we're done.
My three minutes is for Adam Palmer, that's right next to him.
The sign of chief was gone at six. I walked in at six. Sign of chief was gone prior to me walking in. It'd be very nice if we had a sign, okay? At six, not after, at six.
You've got three minutes. Come on.
I can use three. So I'm not going to talk too much about whatever.
Wait a minute.
Michael Parrish.
Name and address, please.
Michael Parrish, 895 Amelia Road. Everyone else has already covered the environmental impact, that would be terrible. The, the impact on our lifestyle, which will be terrible. I want to talk about a couple other things. I think this is a fantastic idea for Henry County. All of the people who live in this community are going to be going to Henry County to purchase. They will be going to the Walmart in Henry County. They won't be coming to Griffin. How do I know that? I live here, I don't come to Griffin. I want to talk to the people whose opinion matters the most today, and that's all of you. You've heard nothing but no's from this community. You were picked to represent the people of Spalding County. This is clear what our voice is. You don't represent some company from Pittsburgh coming down here and trying to make a development in a place where it just doesn't fit. I've looked every one of you in the eyes since I've been up here. I know you're going to do the right thing because you care about the people of this county. We're really far up in the corner, and it's easy to forget about us, but you represent us, too. We're just asking to have our day and to live the lives that we came here to live. We love Spalding County. We just want to have the Spalding County that we came to and that we love, stay the same. This is common. We understand that, that this sprawl is going to make its way to us eventually. But I want to talk about a couple of words that he said: consuming the land. That's what he said. This is inevitable. That's what he said. You make that determination. If he gets to consume our land, and if he gets to make this inevitable push into Spalding County, this is a bad idea. I get those big numbers are really important to you all, but just because he lines the right pockets, pays the right coffers, and funds the right war chests, doesn't mean he should come in here and be able to do this thing. I expect all to do exactly what he put you up here to do: represent the people. Thank you.
Mr. Davis, would you like to come back and rebut a few things? No, we're done. We're done.
Hi. This is, this is a normal process. We, I moved here to Atlanta 32 years ago. The population was 2.7 million people. It's now 6.8 million.
Hey, let's keep it down. He sat there and listened to you guys.
I, I live in town. I, I used to have a three-mile drive to get to, say, the Fox Theater. I'm that close to in-town, which was about six minutes. Now it's about 30 minutes. It's happening everywhere, all over the city. As the city grows and matures, we're now this, Atlanta, Metro Atlanta is now the sixth-largest city in the United States. In the past three years, I think it passed Miami and Philadelphia, I believe, to, to move into, into the sixth-largest. The, the growth happens. People years ago discovered the South, the Sun Belt, and continue to move here. Families that moved here continue to have kids and, and don't leave. And the families grow and need places for their families. The population of the city is increasing probably by over 100,000 a year, year in, year out. This whole discussion, I, I know all these issues, I understand them, that's why we had the meeting with everybody and identified people down this road because they are the ones that are, that are impacted. There's a lot of, unfortunately, conflicts in the, in the, the thought process. On one hand, people don't want a farmer to chop up their land, to sell it after owning it for 100 years, supporting Spalding County for 100 years, trying to run it as a farm. They don't want that farmer to, to, to sell his land into what the current market is. And yet, virtually everybody here has benefited from that same family hitting hard economic times in the 70s, the 80s, and the 90s, and needing to parcel out and sever pieces of land into smaller lots. I think at the time when this was chopped into three- and five-acre lots, I'm sure the discussions were exactly the same. The surrounding farmers were upset at, at this happening, that there was now going to be 40 or 50 houses down a small dirt road, and all these new people were going to come in and, and, and change the lifestyle for them. They've benefited from it, and they've enjoyed it for a long time, and I appreciate that. And they've been very, very lucky with some of the changes that have happened around them. Most places in the city, in the, I'll call it the 30-mile-wide swath of land all the way around the city that's been, that's been built out over the last 30 years, everybody's been built in on from all sides and all directions. Fortunately, in this entire area, everybody got lucky with the water, Henry County Water Authority, building those reservoirs and preserving such a huge amount of land next to us, which will be amazing for animals, wildlife, everything else for, for years to come. These people were also lucky because on the other side of them, they had a family that hung on and hung on and hung on to their remaining land as a farm. And finally, as now that, of the, the three elder members of the family, two passed away last year, as you know, and even one of the next generation sadly passed away earlier this year. They've, they've... They've, they've done their time, they've spent time, energy, and focus on Spalding, and now they're, they're looking to move on. Everybody here has benefited from it and is treating it to some degree like it's their right to have the, the benefit of somebody else's land next to them while they're simultaneously sitting on smaller parcels of land. I get it, I understand it. There's also a desire for everybody to have benefits from Spalding County, and yet, everybody in that quadrant, we just heard, seems to put most of their focus and support into Henry County businesses versus Spalding. I do think that one, one of the maybe, maybe positive things for Spalding, of all the traffic that Henry's causing, and I have to emphasize, it's Henry, not Spalding, that has put in millions and millions and millions of square feet of industrial and, and everything else, housing coming down towards this property, that has congested that area up there, is that hopefully people in this area will start thinking their focus in their community is southward, towards Griffin, towards Smalding County businesses, and not trying to drive. Where it used to be that you could drive relatively short amount of time to get to the Walmart or, or whatever, went up to 20 and hit those stores up there, it's become longer and longer and longer with traffic in Henry County. And now, the time is getting incrementally more in favor of spinning your, your, your direction and your thinking southbound towards Spalding County businesses, which hopefully we see happen. So, yeah, it's, it's, I, I understand the concern. Everybody is, is impacted to some degree. We're, we're happy to make some, some changes. We've already, one person here, we've already pulled development away from their property, and we're happy to, another gentleman has asked me to increase some buffers in a certain area to help them. Happy to do that kind of thing. But we, we do feel that it's appropriate to, to continue with this path of proposing this development, which we do think meets the current market right now, and, and supports a family that's been in the county for 100 years. So, thank you.
Okay, we have any more?
Is there any other ability for other property owners to speak?
No, we're, we've, we've heard, we've heard, we've heard.
The gentleman posted to me last night that there were, there were five bids for this property. Each, he represents one. Can we find out what the other four were?
I, I have nothing to do with that, so we need to move on with the business we have at hand. Okay, Frank, you've got anything else? Okay, listen, listen. If you keep it up, we're just going to have to ask you to leave, and we'll, we'll proceed on. Anybody would like to leave, go ahead and leave now. Okay, you all owe it to us to behave yourself. Okay, Frank, go ahead.
I will say this. I've been on the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Plan of Commission since 1989, and this is one of the best crowds I have ever seen come up to address something that was happening in your neighborhood. We don't make the final decision. We are an advisory board, and your county commissioner is going to make that final decision. And if you do not know who your county commissioner is, and if your county commissioner does not know you, that's a bad business model. If I were you, sitting out there, I would find out first thing tomorrow morning who my county commissioner is, and I would develop a relationship with him. That's all I've got to say.
Go ahead, man.
Okay, my concern about this development, it looks like a wonderful development. The problem is, is the density of it. I, I think it's much too great, high density for the community, but I understand you need to make as much profit as possible, but I just am concerned about the density of it.
My concern with the development plan as presented is the number of cul-de-sacs. It's, in my experience and other places that I have served, the public in looking at, overlooking zoning and development plans, we always look for an opportunity for people to escape, or for people to get to people. And I don't like the whole concept of as, as many of these not tying together and making a reasonable loop. It's very concerning to me of the number of dead-end streets, the ones that, yes, you can turn around at the end of them, but you have to make that double trip in order to get there. And that would be difficult for our emergency vehicles and those people who are trying to get to, especially the older people and the senior areas. So I think the, the major concern I have with this development is that it is, it needs to be relooked at as far as getting some more connectivity within the streets. I am concerned about the density, but given the opportunity to develop in these days in time, there is not opportunity within our rules and regulations for us to speak against that unless we put some kind of new rule or new law on the books to take care of that.
So just a point of clarification, should the board recommend for approval of the rezoning, that doesn't necessarily tie you in with the current concept plan? And I think with the possible deletion of the townhomes and what they're talking about with Amelia Road possibly having active adult, there's going to be some changes anyway. So you could have a condition in there where if you choose to recommend for approval, it does not imply approval of the current concept plan.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think I would have to defer to Ms. Upshaw. I think she's by far got the most experience in planning and zoning of any of us up here. And so when she sees a problem with the cul-de-sacs, you know, I have to believe she's right. I certainly understand the, the bad feelings about this coming in your neighborhood, but the Wilson family is due their chance to use their property to their best advantage. That is the truth. And if we can get rid of the townhouses and redesign that part of it into a more livable area, I think that's what we should do, and I certainly hope this isn't the final concept plan that comes out. That's what I see.
Is there, there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion. I can't answer that. I'm, you know. Okay, we need to push on here, guys.
I'm conflicted. I'm having a difficult time trying to phrase a motion that would put us in a forward direction towards the rest of the agenda. But I do think that we do need to move forward. I would consider a discussion amongst us as to whether or not tabling this design, this application until such time as we could look at the proposed designs incorporated with some consideration, if indeed the applicant is willing to do so, for the concerns that have been expressed by the community here. But I don't know whether or not that is amenable with my current commissioners as well, so... Therefore, I make a motion that we table this application until such time as we can see a new design as referenced in the comments by the applicant with some consideration, if possible, by the community.
I'll second that. Those in favor signify, raise your right hand. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would take the position that that renders the remaining variance applications moot, since all of this is tied to a concept plan and has to be approved as a conceptual plan.
I agree. So do we need to go ahead and table five through nine?
It would be better to have a record of it, but they're rendered moot, but we, we know, we know what the status is.
All right, I'll entertain such a motion.
I so move.
All right, so we are tabling items five, six, seven, eight, and nine until we get the concept plan. Do I have a second? Second, if those in favor signify, raise your right hand. Okay, next item on the agenda are the minutes.
Yes, you have the minutes of the September 24, 2024 meeting before you.
Okay, I, I read mine, and I, I wanted to know if I really said all those things in that, in that manner.
Mr. Chairman, I had the same concept. I, I didn't realize I stuttered as that much.
Yeah.
They're different from the minutes that we're experienced in before, in that they were verbatim rather than general. Is that to be the new?
I would prefer it not. It was done by a different person this time. I prefer it not be verbatim unless legal says it must be verbatim.
It doesn't have to be verbatim.
Follow me.
However, the minutes do constitute your, the actions that you take officially.
Yes.
But it doesn't have to be verbatim. Is this some new computer program?
Kind of.
Is this like AI recording telephone calls?
It will not be this way next meeting.
I, I sounded a little too southern for my taste.
You say y'all?
But nevertheless, I read them, and I, I agree with them, so I'll make the motion to approve.
And I'll second it.
Those in favor signify, raise your right hand at the minute.
Mr. Chair, could you ask the audience to please exit quietly?
Hey, guys. Hey, how about moving on out if you're going to talk? Let's pause just a minute, maybe they'll find the door. Okay, let's carry on.
Next item is board member comments. Any and none?
Okay.
No board member comments?
I've got one for Steve, but it's going to be private.
I have no director comments, I'm talked out, so...
All right, so we're going to entertain a motion for adjournment.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
I second. We're adjourned.